Let's pray. Dear Lord God, Heavenly Father, I thank you. I thank you for brothers and sisters in Christ, for partners in the gospel and friends. I thank you for what has been at Trinity. I thank you that we now stand here firmly on the shoulders of those who have come before us, and we give thanks to you both for who we are and for what's out in front of us. For we know you, we know you are here and you are there as well to see us from here home. And so, dear Lord, be with us. Pour grace out upon us. And in this conversation, as, as we take advantage of this opportunity of having these brothers together, I just want to ask you that you would open us up to the journey of understanding the church in the world, the church today, and our place as Trinity, our place and our opportunity in the midst of it all. In your name we pray, amen. So, there's Doug. God love you Doug. We give thanks to God for Doug. We, and Doug, where were you like yesterday, like day before? God is good. God is good. I thank, I thank God for that. So, so here's what I would like to do. I would like to ask a question of the clergy in the room, and just give them a chance to visit with us. And, and the question is this. What do you see as the major challenges that are causing decline in the Lutheran Church Missouri Senate today? So, is there another microphone, Matty? Where's it? Oh, it's like right here. God love it. It's like right here in front of me. And, so, what are the major challenges that you see going on that brings about decline in the church today? You want to go? You want me to start? You want to? Tom, Bob, Doug, anybody? We better get started before Charlie gets here, or Chuck gets here, because he'll... Just kidding. I just, I just saw him walking down the hallway, so I figured. Go ahead.
How, how much time do I have?
Welcome. It is a joy to have you here.
Great to be here.
So Alan and I, Alan and I did this thing called Pastoral Leadership Institute, Governance and Executive Training together many, many years ago. And good God now look at us.
What was the question?
What do you see as the major contributors to decline in the church?
Besides the devil, the world and our sinful flesh? Despair.
You're not going to help the Bible study get an hour long if you give me the cliff.
Any words, cliché. The devil, the world, our sinful flesh. And I would say that it's very easy to turn to despair and give up and not share the word. I know you had a festival yesterday, right? Invited your community here. I was in Woodstock yesterday. They were celebrating their 150th anniversary as a congregation, way smaller than they used to be. It had a lot of stuff go wrong in their congregation, but they gathered, they had a wonderful service. They did something for their community. And so I think it is that we give up and we forget there's still power in the Word of God, that the gospel is still the power of God to salvation. If I could share one story. I was meeting with a group of pastors on the south side of southern suburbs, and they were all lamenting the congregations are getting smaller. How are we going to sustain what's going on? For about an hour and 15 minutes, we talked about everything that was wrong, everything that was broken and why they were concerned. And, you know, there's reason to be concerned. And it was time to be done. And so I thought, well, somebody should say something. And I thought to myself, well, I'm the district president. I guess I should say something. So I said, brothers, as we finish, I just want to remind you that the Word of God still works and that the gospel is the power of God to salvation. Pretty simple stuff. And one of the brother pastors was going to put me in my place. And he says, boss, that's enough happy talk. You're preaching to the choir. And I said, well, I'm a member of the choir, and I need to be reminded that the Word of God works and the gospel is still the power of God to salvation.
Amen.
And we're part of the choir. We just need to remind each other. And, you know, we talked a lot. We celebrated pastoral ministry today. But we know that the real force in sharing the gospel is laypeople as you share the hope that you have in Jesus. So that's my answer.
Praise God. Brothers, Chuck, the question is, what do you see as the major contributors to decline in the church today? And so that's the question. You don't need, I'm not going to... Any of the rest of you? Doug, you have input? Ideas? Anybody have questions? Anybody have questions? You don't want to do this? Yes, Jan?
Are you talking about churches today? Because the, there are many churches who, that are very much on the incline.
Yes. I, I believe that there are a set of things that every individual congregation can do that we offer up to the Lord and the Lord will bless. When the body is healthy, it is meant to grow. I still believe that today. And there are congregations in Lutheran Church Missouri Senate that are doing great work and growing fantastically. And there are congregations in other denominations that are doing great work and growing fantastically. There are other congregations across the denominational lines who have declined and struggling and, and dying and, and those kinds of things. And I, and I believe that there are things that we've identified together in the year that we've been together that have got to be offered up to the Lord so that he would bless and lead us to turnaround. There is, there are congregations all around us that are, that are doing great work and growing. And we give thanks to God for them. And we want to be what they are, right? We want to be where they are. We rejoice in that. The goal is to get more people to heaven and less people to hell. The goal is to gather together in the church and head toward heaven together, holding on to one another, holding one another up and strengthening one another for the mission that is before us. I think sometimes one of the things that you see in congregations that are in decline is that we have a tendency, I think here's the word, forget. When we, when we begin to decline, there's this kind of automatic kind of reactionary kind of circle the wagons, kind of turn in on yourself kind of, kind of way to deal with your pain that, that takes place in congregational family systems that, that a part of the turnaround has got to be, no, let's reach back out with the power of God's love. Let's reach back out with the, the Word of God. Let's risk, risk. I love this book. I love this book. It's called Canoeing the Mountains. Canoeing the Mountains, right? It's a great, it's a great text. And in that text, he, he, he makes this point that turnaround, like what the Lord has in mind for Trinity, takes a grand spirit of adventure. A grand spirit of adventure. Now, are you ready for a grand adventure? Many of us are thinking it's a grand adventure just to get from the couch to the fridge and back. Hey, yes, Kirk?
I think we have a wonderful opportunity with this Charlie Kirk turnaround thing, that there's a real need particularly among the young people. They're looking for something. Let them look towards Trinity if possible. I don't know how we can do it, but I think it's an amazing opportunity.
Yeah.
And I have not heard that mentioned once in the last couple of weeks. Now, maybe it has been mentioned.
You haven't been listening.
Maybe I haven't, well, that's... Well, I mean, as far as us, what, what we can as a congregation do.
Look, I, response to, response to catastrophic loss and assassination, murder and martyrdom of, of a controversial man of God. What's amazing to me is that, that there has been opportunity on the heels of this for great spiritual momentum to take place in the community around the country. And we rejoice in that. One of the things that I don't believe is that, that there may be strategies that come up out of that for the sake of meeting God's people where they are, not where we wish they were, is to be able to be open and receptive and to lovingly, patiently meet them where they are and receive them where they are and be in relationships with, with people so that they can find their way to the Lord and to his church in all of its various forms. And perhaps Trinity can be a part of that journey as well. What are you, what are you seeing? What are you, what are you thinking about spiritual response to the Charlie Kirk murder and the assassination? Any of you other brothers have things to say about that? So in that day after it took place, I prayed as a grieving person for Charlie. And then we started prayer services on Wednesday nights. And we, we go to the Lord in prayer on behalf of that. And you begin to talk to people about that. One of the things you always need to remember is that all kinds of different people feel all kinds of different things in different ways about all these kinds of things. And to assume that everybody feels the same way about all those things is a dangerous thing to feel. So as you, as you lead a congregation like this in the midst of a catastrophic kind of situation like that, you have to be wise and insightful and hopeful and always point people to the life, the death and the resurrection of the Christ the way we always do, the way we always do. It's not about what we're for or what we're against. It's about who we believe in, right? What else would you say, guys?
Yeah. Dear brother, just love. I just love the fact that you and I are here on the dance floor together.
So I think one of the powerful things was the healing that started coming with the memorial service.
Yeah.
And I think that's a model for all of us.
Yeah.
I just got a call yesterday from someone who is not a Charlie Kirk fan, asking whether or not we felt that, that it was right that our third baseman was allowed to go to the funeral instead of play baseball. And there's a lot of people had, had this, and they said, well, what's your opinion on that? I said, I think it's a good idea. I, I think it's a great idea. And didn't you hear the powerful message of the Lord Jesus Christ being lifted up? And in particular, hearing from his wife saying, I forgive him because Jesus forgave me.
Yeah.
And that's where we get our power. We were talking about despair in the church. As we start, as sisters and brothers in Christ, as we start despairing ourselves about what's, what's happening in our world, what's happening in our lives, what's happening in our bodies? You know? God ain't done with us yet. And he's called us up, called us up to, to be women and men of God. And the way that he tells you that you're done being a child of God and being a witness for him is you look like this.
You want me to lay you down?
Until you're laying down and crossing your arms in the casket, you ain't done yet.
Right.
And, and, you know, we as sisters and brothers of Christ, you look around here and say, you know what? All of us have grown old together. You used to be young with me. Right? All of us have grown old together, but he has not ended our ministry. And did you know that there are people with gray hair who don't know Jesus Christ? Did you know that there's grandmas and grandpas who need support on how do I witness to my grandkids?
Yeah.
Did you know that? And you're just filling the blank. We're not done yet. And, and we, we can turn around. And, and I just want to encourage you. I, I just left two congregations and a school out in Rockford. And in the two something years that I was there, we went from 20 in worship to 60 in one. We went from 100 in worship to 180 in the other. And the school got saved. And we started off, I think we had 25 in kindergarten. At least I, I wasn't there to, to see the first day whether they all showed up. But turned around, but, but we got five baptisms out of the school. Because I started talking to the grandmas and grandpas that were dropping them off. I says, is that grandchild baptized? You know, we're not done yet. And as long as we are the witnesses, the martyrs, that's what martyrion is, is just a witness. As long as we are the witnesses for the Lord Jesus Christ, he will use our witness. It says, the word of God doesn't go out without accomplishing what he wants it to do. And so you just got to keep on pitching. So with, with the Charlie Kirk, I think it's a great opportunity for, for us to, to be an answer and say, you know what? The world said A, and we were saying B. Well, now some of the world is saying, well, wait a minute, A is not right. A doesn't work. But they don't hear the B answer. So let's just keep on being the, the winsome, loving children of God through faith in Christ Jesus he's made us to be.
And God will add to our number daily of those who are being saved, right? So, Doug Warman, looks like he's, his head's about to explode. He's got stuff. He's got stuff that he believes. Do I let it out? Come on, man. Talk to us. You're really, I love you.
Thank you. I'm always used to following Pastor Mueller anyways.
Clean it, clean it all up.
Well, we did that for a while, right? No, what, what has brought about decline? I think it's, it's as simple as keeping our eyes on Jesus. Jesus remains attractive to all. I want to say everyone, but a lot of age groups. If we just get him out and get the word out. What I have observed as an older guy, when I was a kid, I barely had TV. We had black and white, three channels. Nowadays, I got in my pocket, 24/7, I can look at it. As I've been pondering this, we as Christians have to turn the noise off to listen to the voice of the shepherd and his guidance for our lives because it gets discouraging hearing the news. What news are we listening to? Are we listening to the assassinations and pouring that in and saying, what's happening with the world? Or are we saying, where's God's hand in this?
Yeah.
Where is he working? What can we do to get that message of Jesus forgiveness out? So it's saying no to some things so we can get Jesus lifted up. And, well, I've been blessed to be part of Pastor Mueller's ministry, Pastor Petzold and Pastor Keith. And I'm so grateful. This isn't always the case. But I've been blessed to work with people who proclaim Jesus. And he will work through that witness. May he continue to embolden you to lift Jesus up and have people be excited that in spite of all their stuff, they're still loved. And because they're loved, they can love others. I always liked what Max Lucado, he actually stole the book title for me. No, I...
You know this is being recorded.
I know. His, his book title is Live Loved.
Yeah.
I've always loved that.
That's right.
I'm loved by Jesus, so live your life out and he will work through that. But we have to share Jesus kind of love. And it's so hard, so hard. But with the Holy Spirit's help, with the help of other Christians encouraging us and telling the stories, we can make a difference.
Yeah. Thank you, man. Thank you. One of the things, one of the things that I think is just really, really, if you think back, now I'm talking Charlie. If you think back to the days of 40 Days of Purpose, right, at Trinity? Right, we're thinking, was that you? In that season, in that season, there was a national movement, right? For some reason, the Holy Spirit blew across the entire country. And, and it swept up in it. It swept up in this national movement of inspiration of, of, of God's people, a move into purpose-driven life. And at the heart of that stood Christ in the Word, right? And, and there were, there were literally all kinds of different congregations who began group ministries and small group ministries of, of different kinds on the heels of a book that went out. For some reason, for some reason, the Holy Spirit, as he wills, he blows wherever he chooses and he blew across the nation. And Trinity is one of those congregations that saw great momentum of the Holy Spirit in a time like that. Every time there's a, there's a wave of the Holy Spirit across the country, it's not always because of a book like 40 Days of Purpose. Sometimes it's in the face of catastrophe. Sometimes it's in, in response to a murder. What the devil meant for evil, God turns to good. And he, and he, in my opinion, seems to be blowing across the country for the sake of what he has in mind. And our prayer should be that Almighty God would blow across Trinity in that same way. Fire, fire up, fanning to flame the gift of faith among us. And that, and that he would, he would for such a time as this, be the church in the world today with the same message we've always had, right? What else? What else? Questions, comments? Yes, Jonathan. Oh, I don't know. He's just about to retire. He may have too many words in him. Just kidding. Come on.
I'll hold off from that. I think just the churches need to grow and grow and grow in the ministry of being there. That's the term I'm using a little bit more frequently now just in describing all the different ways that the various elements of ministry and mission need to be taking place in ways they haven't before. People's needs are often not seen by the church because we're not in the right places.
Yeah.
And we're not finding ways to be creative or to be as far into the places as we need to be that, expecting that they'll come to us. You mentioned that before. We need to be there for those disasters. And that's happening big time. But we, we're there with the Word of God. That's the difference. But we're there. And people understand that this is the church at work. It's God at work as well as helping people. We're there because of human care and because of feeding people. And that's always been true in the church. It's always been a part of what we do as Christians, each one of us individually. But organizationally, systemically, our congregation, we know that from experiences here. Education, you may not realize this, but people are flocking to schools these days. Why? It's partially because there are some places God is blessing with additional funding and support to help them. But that's not the main reason. They are finding alternatives to what they've been struggling with in their communities. They don't like what's being taught or they don't like the way it's being approached. But when there's a Christian school environment, Pastor, thank you for sharing that story about the little success that's there. That's because those people heard that there's an opportunity. There's a place where they can send their children. But we need to do that in more creative ways, finding ways to be there where we haven't been before, staying there where we're challenged because we don't have the staffing or we don't have the funding. But staying there because God needs us there to be in those places for education. And Christian education is growing because of that. Now, we have our problems with finding teachers. We have our problems with making sure that we sustain that. But parents, grandparents, people need to know that the Word of God is being taught and preached in their places that were there for them.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, please.
I wonder if you're familiar with the Savannah Bananas? Oh, look at Savannah Bananas. They're that fun baseball team there from Savannah, Georgia. And they have a, there's a book by the president of it talking about what they do, why they're on the rise. They go all around the country now having these fun ball games. Almost as good as the Milwaukee Brewer game, but anyhow, they have fun. The coaches have fun and so forth. What was that? Oh. Anyhow, I better go back. But so they got, they, they're creative. And my son gave me this book for Father's Day. And I read it, I consumed it. It was thinking, it's all about creativity. And I think we've maybe, you know, we get to be older, congregations get to older ministry. The Missouri Senate is 170, and we forget the joy of being creative and doing new things, looking at things in a new way. So I know Pastor Mueller just served a congregation. That's two congregations served by one pastor. There's a school partnerships. And while we look at decline in many places, it does give us an excuse to partner with our sister congregations, maybe like we did when we were founded 100, 100 plus years ago. So I was, as I mentioned, I was in Woodstock yesterday. And that congregation says, well, we, we want our own pastor. We've always had our own pastor. Well, they're not in the position where they can have a full-time pastor. And sometimes congregations say, well, if we can't have what we want, then we'll just pout, right? But I went back in their history and that Pastor Schmidt, good Missouri Senate name, Pastor Schmidt, came from Emmanuel Crystal Lake to Woodstock to plant a church. So they didn't begin having their full-time pastor. They began by having a neighboring pastor who showed up because God's word, God's word and sacrament needed to be there. And I think so, maybe some of the answer is being creative and rediscovering what we once were, the flexibility we had, the mission passion that the Germans had when they, they got here. And so sometimes maybe we struggle with some institutional stuff that we need to set aside. Going back to the original question, every congregation struggles with keeping the main thing, the main thing, right? And then right away, we have to say, what is the main thing? And for some, it's style of worship. That's the main thing. Or some of it for it is the constitution. That's the main thing. Or believe it or not, some congregations really like tradition. And that's the main thing. I didn't say that would ever be here, but there's other places. And so we maybe need to rediscover what is the main thing. And I used to use that at Emmanuel Belvedere. And finally somebody goes, okay, you keep talking about keeping the main thing, the main thing. What exactly is the main thing? Jesus, his work and his word. And there is such a thing in our confession as adiaphra, like a whole bunch of things that God doesn't care what you do, just be faithful to the Word. So my bigger point was partnerships and finding out what partnerships look like in the future. And being creative is actually kind of fun. And Pastor Mueller did a great job out there, helping them rediscover who they were.
Awesome. Thank you. Yes, Tom?
Well, Pastor Keith, your message today was about variety. God loves variety and the scripture texts from Revelation where every nation and every tribe under heaven gather at the throne of God and are praising God. Every tribe, every nation. We've had this, this understanding as... We've had this, this understanding as Missouri Southern Lutheran, that this is the German church. Ever hear that?
Yes. I heard it from Oswald Hoffman, the first time I heard.
I, I was baptized in a Norwegian Lutheran church. And then my family moved a few blocks away and we started going to the German church in Chicago. But I think part of the problem for our decline is we've always seen the church as people like me. We like being around people who are like us. And we don't so much like being around people who are different than us. Well, when I was a kid, I graduated from eighth grade, from that wonderful Lutheran school. But at, at that time, the, the congregation decided, "We don't want those people coming to our church and school. We're going to build a wall around our place and we're going to keep those people out." And God laughed and God said, "Watch what I can do." And in seven years, the community no longer looked like it did when that statement was made. And the church composition changed completely in like seven years. Well, I went back and served that congregation, 2014 to 2017. And in about 2016, I was told, "Pastor, this church is for us. Bring it a little wall around because we don't want those people coming in." Isn't that tragic?
That is tragic.
That is tragic. God wants people from every tribe and every nation on earth to be a part of his church. We can't see the church as just people who look like me, people who have the same kind of interests as me. But we've really got to open up our, our hearts and our minds to, to reach out to people who are different. Something interesting with me, over, over the past year or so, I started working part-time up here at the hardware store in Roseville. I'm, I'm the screen and window repair guy. They've got a screen shop down in the basement and I go down there and I work. But I've got my, my little Bluetooth speaker and I go down there and I've got K-Love blaring down there. People know that there's a, a Christian in the house while I'm in there working. And I've got, I try to be as joyful as I possibly can in all my interactions with people. And people are actually coming to me and saying, "Will you pray with me?" At the hardware store, the hardware store is a little community center. People from all around here, all different kinds of people come there. And it, it's a great opportunity to be around people who are different, encourage people who are different, let people know that I'm a Christian and I'm a pastor too. And I would love to pray for you and there's a church community over here that you can come and be a part of, that you'll be welcomed into. Quite interesting.
Quite interesting.
I screen them all, yeah. If you're, if you're living, breathing, come.
I, I, I was at Zion Lutheran Church in Dallas, Texas for a few years, for seven years. And, and so probably year four or five of being there, there's a congregational meeting. And the topic at the congregational meeting was, "Do we want to move again? Do we want to move again?" They were the, they are considered the mother church of Dallas. And they had moved from central downtown Dallas out to the suburbs in North Dallas. And it was in the history of that time there that a dear Hispanic man of God joined that church and was with them. And by the time this meeting was taking place, where they're talking about moving further out to the suburbs, he, he, who was now an elder in the congregation, stood up and said to them, "You know, you gringos, you gringos can continue to run and hide, but we will find you." And, and so instead of, instead of, instead of taking a vote and moving further out to the suburbs where all the non-denoms are and all of the other people who were scared of the city were, were leaving and exiting, they made a decision to stay and pour into the neighborhood where they were and become the community church where they were. And the community was uniquely, completely different now. And God has blessed that greatly. But it's really a grand season to be the church in the world this day. But we have got to be the church in the world in this day. And that's the whole journey for us of this 5-2 move, of these strategies for turnaround. All of it is about being the church, being the church in the world in this day, in the neighborhood, where we are, and then around the world. What else comes to mind? What, you have an august group of clergy in front of you. You have any questions for them? Any thoughts? Nobody has any thoughts? Praise God. Yes? Wait a minute, let me bring you the microphone. Rajene is not here in order to keep tabs on you, so we're just going to turn you loose.
Oh, she's going to be so unhappy that she's not here. At first I want to ask you, with all the work that, with the teens that we're doing.
Yes.
Has it increased?
Yes.
That's wonderful to hear.
Yes.
And the other thing-
So let, let me give a deeper answer. One of the things that doing youth ministry always has about it is that those kids grow up, dang it. We just had six really dynamic seniors go off to college, right? Matty, and, and, and recovering from that is going to take some time. It's now dominated by freshmen and sophomores, that high school youth ministry. But they are in here doing great work and SNX and, and they are all fully engaged and we're very thankful.
So the other thing is Wednesday night prayer. The first week I went, it was, I was able to just feel God's presence because there's nothing else going on. Somebody actually got me to move to the front row of the main part of the church. Wow, what a move there. And I found that after I left there, I talked to other people and other friends about what I experienced, which is helping me to talk about our Lord because of what had happened and what I felt. And not only could you stand up or sit and say what was in your heart and your soul, but afterwards you could do a one-on-one and share your soul.
Yeah.
So I thank you for that. And it has helped me share that experience, which maybe will help other people come and experience that. And then come on Sunday.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Wow. I thought you'd be much more confrontational than-
That's later.
Oh, okay, okay. I, so, so let me just tell you, on the heels of what I believe is a mouthpiece of the Lord, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, being assassinated. Charlie Kirk said some things, I wish he would have been more tactful and sensitive in the way that he said him. And he said, he said some things in a rather confrontational kind of way. He probably took some stands that weren't real conciliatory, but more, but a man of God with a great voice for the gospel. And, and upon his murder, there was, and frankly, still is, a kind of heaviness, a kind of darkness, a kind of, a kind of oppression that came over me. And I believe kind of sets in on the nation, kind of, kind of sets in on the nation regardless of how you feel about all those things. Evil is trying to do its worst, however you feel about those things. And so I was, I was struggling. I was struggling to know how to respond and struggling to know what to do. When I, when I first heard it, I was over at the Mueller Mansion and we were having a team meeting about the succession and the plan for filling holes in the music. And, and it was, and it was Chuck that came into the room and, and said to us, "I just heard that Charlie had been shot." And I think maybe you also said at that particular point that he had, had died as well. And we went on in that meeting. But then really quickly, right after that, it was Paula and I sitting together and I, and I, I just said, "There's, there's, there's this heaviness that I, that I'm not quite sure what to do with." And then, you know, behind every great pastor, there's a woman rolling her eyes, right? And so Paula just said, "Well, let's pray. Take it to the Lord in prayer. Let's go." That's what you would always do. Let's, let's get after it. And so it was, the Lord just kind of convicted and convinced me that I didn't need, I didn't need a great big plan. I didn't need, we just needed a raw opportunity for God's people to come together and to call these things up and to call them out and to cry out to the Lord. And so we gathered together at 6:30 on Wednesday after having just, just said it in the weekend worship and just kind of sent it out that we were going to do that. And, and God blessed us in that. But I, I still believe in the season that we're in, it's not just a one-time thing. It's a, we have got to stay together and we have got to come before the altar of God and we have got to come to this place and then also pray where you are and pray with your people. And it's not a both and, it's a both and, not an either or. But for such a time as this, God's people need opportunity to come together and to call out to the Lord in prayer. And just watch him work. Watch him show us the answer to all of our questions about these things and, and lead us. He is God and we are not. I always want to make it really, really hard on him and really, really easy on me because he is God and I am not. And it is he, this battle belongs to the Lord. And he is the one who is going to show us our way through it all. Anything else in closing? Anything else? Yes? Come on up, Bob. Nice tie, by the way.
Thank you. So a former pastor, senior pastor here once said, "The purpose of the church is to keep on keeping on." And part of that is tied to, I don't know if you've ever seen it on YouTube, there's a series, different people have done it, but life-saving stations starts out, I'm not going to go through the whole thing. But on the east coast, there's, along the shore, there's ships that get wrecked. And this church decides that they're going to open the doors and it'll become a life-saving station, right? And then over the course of time, it gets tiresome and the people are dirty that are saved. And they end up building another place for other people to do that. And then it kind of ends with all over the east coast are a lot of these former life-saving stations that have more or less become clubs. So as we look at our care and compassion, the key for us to be a life-saving station and not be stuck in apathy or despair, we have to remember what our foundation is, right? Jesus Christ, as we've mentioned here. So I, over the last four years, I've been at four much smaller struggling churches as a vacancy pastor. And for me, the one thing that would separate them from other churches is more of an inward focus, right? It's all about us. This is our church. So they'll do anything to preserve the building, but not necessarily carrying on the purpose of the church. And that's something we have to kind of look at. I'm not saying that that's here. I, I think it exists to a certain extent in every church, this idea that this is my church. It's all about me kind of thing. So the, the blessing that we have, I've had the opportunity to come back and serve here along with Tom and Pastor Keith and Pastor Chuck and Pastor Doug. We have a great team of people. It's, it's kind of like in high school, I ran a relay race. You get the baton and you're passing on. And that's kind of what we do as a congregation as well as church leadership. So I just want to say that I'm blessed to be here. I hope you feel the same way. The thing that differentiates us is our care and compassion and our looking out outside of the four walls of Trinity. So thank you.
Praise God. Thank you. Thank you. Can we pray? Let's pray. Yeah, we want to kill an hour. Invite a bunch of clergy together to talk to people. Right? Let's pray. Dear Lord, God, Heavenly Father, I thank you, I thank you for Alan. I thank you for his role as the president of the Northern Illinois District. I thank you for his place in the council of presidents. I thank you for the Lutheran Church Missouri Senate. Keep her faithful, but dear God, make her fruitful for the sake of the King and the kingdom. Allow us the joy that comes from being churchmen together. I ask you, dear Lord, that you would unite us and that you would open us up to the journey that is before us, that meets one another with unconditional love and flexibility for the sake of meeting people who are all over the map with different tastes, different styles, different ways, different experiences. I ask you, dear Lord, that you would allow all of us to watch you grow your kingdom and use us to get it done. I ask you, dear Lord, that you would unite Trinity and that you would bring us forward for such a time as this, for the sake of what you have in mind as the Holy Spirit blows across the country. I ask you, dear Lord, that you would be with us, pour grace out upon us, excite us to the joy that is ours and the victory that is yours that you hand to us. And you make us more than conquerors. Dear Lord, we commit ourselves to you, to one another, and what you have in mind for us. In your name we pray, dear Jesus. Amen. Thanks, you guys. Thanks. Thanks. Yes. Praise God.